Good evening. I call to order the City Council of City of Lathir Village. Madam Clerk, can you please take the roll call?
Roll call. Mayor Garrett.
Here.
Mayor Protem Kanter.
Present.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Here.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Here.
And Councilmember Stallings.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I invite everyone in the audience to say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could have approval of the agenda?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion already? Anything need to be added or moved? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The agenda has been approved. Also, there is no items under the consent agenda, so do I really have to...City Attorney, do I have to really go through the motion of that, seeing there's nothing under there?
No, you can skip right down to action requests.
Because there is no public...well...
Well, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Public comment, then skip down to the action request.
So I invite anyone from the public, if you would like to come up and speak about anything that's not on the agenda. You don't have to give your address.
Mayor Garrett, members of the council, and members of the city administration, I'm Diane Anderson, and I'm actually here from the Lathir Village Women's Club, not in my own right tonight. And I'm here to let you know it's a special night. I'm here to offer you a chance of immortality in Lathir Village history. Yes? It's our 80th anniversary of the Lathir Village Women's Club. We've been here 14 years longer than the city has, and we are going to have a big celebration on the 1st of June, to which I hope you'll all be buying tickets. And in between, I'm here to let you know tonight that we are producing a booklet, similar to the 50th anniversary booklet that the city produced. And tonight, I'm here to offer each one of you a chance to buy ads in the book and become part of Lathirip history. So I'll pass these out, you know. You can get my contact number to give me your ads and your checks to Cheryl or Yvette. They know how to reach me. And I'm sure you'll be very happy to be part of it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can just give them to Yvette.
Got it.
Or give it to us.
And if you can get information, there's a proclamation for you.
Yes, actually, I should add one more thing. Thank you for reminding me. At the time of our 50th anniversary, the council made a wonderful proclamation congratulating us on all the wonderful work we've done for the city, the contributions we continue to make. And being shameless, I'm here tonight to suggest it would be a really good idea if you had a similar sort of motion that you made in a very pretty format, so we could get it fairly early, and I can scan it and put it into the program. Thank you.
And this is for the eight...okay, now I see it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Let's go into the action items. Oh, sorry.
I wanted to talk about this gas station you guys want to put in Lathirip, but it's on the items, I won't talk about it then. But I do, on Southfield Road, there's in Kilburne, there's an office building there. It has a lamp that's leaning towards Southfield now. One is already fallen. This was a year or so ago. Now another one's starting to lean. I'm surprised nobody's noticed it.
Does it Detroit Edison?
No, it's a private pub. It's a private. It's on their lot.
Where is it?
On...it's at Office Building on Southfield Road, just between, I think it's South...Kilburne and Margate, I think it is.
East side or west side?
On the west side. Once...last year, one fell over, so they took the foundation and threw it off to the side of the building. And this one here is now leaning quite a bit. I'm surprised that somebody hasn't noticed it already.
So it's the actual buildings?
Right. It's not the public.
So we send you out?
She will take care of it.
Can I say anything about the gas station?
Sure. Why not?
Are you guys really going to put a gas station in Lathir Village?
It looks like we are.
You are. You know, gas doesn't...people don't make money selling gas. It's what they sell in that building. What are they going to sell in that building? Beer and wine now? And stuff that you've been fighting?
No beer and wine.
But you're going to let a gas station? I think it's a terrible decision.
You do?
Terrible decision.
Thank you.
Just the price of a gas station.
Any other public comments? Okay. Hearing none, we'll go into the first action request, which would be the motion to appoint planning commissions to fill three expiring seats.
Do you want to describe it first, or do we go straight to the commission?
Oh, it's for the planning commission.
Okay.
Well, I'll put it this way. There are seven members. Three of the seats are up for the planning commission.
All right. I'll make a motion to nominate Mark Pietrowski to fill one of the positions that is...one of the terms that is currently expired on February 1st of 2019, to a seat on the planning commission.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Yes, I have to do for each one. Okay, just want to make sure.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So Mark will fulfill the March 1st, 2019 vacancy?
All the seats are actually...the term...one term ended February 1st, 2018.
Right.
Another one expired February 1st, 2019.
Right.
And another one expired March 1st, 2019. But because we are just now filling them, all the terms that we are going to be filling are now going to be ending on March 1st.
Okay. That makes sense.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of appointing Mark Pietrowski to the Lathir Village Planning Commission for three-year terms. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion, or he's been appointed. Second position.
I make a motion to appoint Mike Keenan as a member of the planning commission.
Second? Is there a second?
I second that.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So that would be different. There is no...it's either a yea or there's a nay. There is no extension on it.
No, there isn't.
Did you want a roll call?
So I'm still saying that there is no extension, so you have to either yea or there is a nay. There is no middle ground. Sorry. Okay, roll call vote. Okay, let's do roll call.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
No.
Mayor Protem Kanter?
No.
Councilmember Siddiqui?
Yes.
And Councilmember Stallings?
Uh, no.
Motion not adopted.
Okay, again, for appointment of the seat, second seat.
I make a motion to appoint Anna Thompson to the...as a member.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? So do we need to do a roll call on this one also?
Might as well.
Well, we'll just go ahead and keep it clean and do that.
Roll call. Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kanter?
Yes.
Councilmember Siddiqui?
Yes.
Councilmember Stallings?
Yes.
And Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Motion adopted.
So, um, thank you.
And that was for the term ending?
March 1st, 2022.
Which seat? It didn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter, okay.
I make a motion that we nominate Kieran Miller.
Any second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. We'll do a roll call vote.
Okay, roll call. Mayor Protem Kanter?
Start with me or Mayor Garrett?
I'm just going down in the order that I have here.
Yeah, no.
Councilmember Siddiqui?
No.
Councilmember Stallings?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
No.
And Mayor Garrett? Motion not adopted.
Can I make another motion then?
Sure.
Les Stanbury?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Let's do roll call.
Councilmember Siddiqui?
Yes.
Councilmember Stallings?
Yes.
I'm thinking.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kanter?
Yes.
Motion adopted.
So that's all three seats, correct?
Yes.
Is this when we talk about the emeritus for Keith, Mr. Brown?
If you like.
As the founder of...is that okay to bring that up now? The emeritus status for Keith Brown, the founder of Planning Commission?
Well, I...yeah, you can discuss it. That's if you would like.
So that is my discussion, to just consider him with the emeritus status because he is the founder. He's been a part of it since the beginning and has contributed quite a bit to development of our city, so.
So what does that mean, though, to have that status? Are you a voting?
He doesn't have vote...from what I understand, he doesn't have voting rights, but he can participate in the discussions. Is that correct?
It's really not a recognized position, so it would be more...
Advisory.
He could be invited to attend, but he wouldn't have a seat on the commission. He would be invited to attend, and the commission could solicit his input, but he would not be a voting member. He would not have, like I said, he would not have a seat. He could not act as a representative of the planning commission.
So just be honorary position?
Yeah.
More or less.
An advisory, you know, he's been there.
And there would be not...whether or not formally named as such, there's nothing that would prevent Mr. Brown from still attending the planning commission meetings and sharing his knowledge
Right.
with members both existing and the new members.
Which as a planning commission member would be welcome.
Okay. Well, we can...well, one, to see if that's something...well, I don't know. We see if that's something he'd be interested.
He wants to do.
Yeah.
That would be first and foremost.
So do you want me to reach out to him and have it on the next agenda?
Sure.
As an action item?
Yes, thank you. Okay, so the next...oh, man, I was down to three, only a second. Um, next action item is the consideration of opting out of the medical and recreational marijuana licensing with a sunset. City Attorney, do you want to kind of explain?
Yeah, I can discuss this. So at our last meeting, it was discussed amongst the council that the desire is not to be the first horse through the gate on this endeavor. We would like to see how it's handled in the other communities surrounding us that are opting to opt in. So what the council...my recommendation to council, what council has instructed me to prepare is an ordinance that would opt the city out of recreational marijuana. However, there's a sunset provision in there, meaning that if the ordinance, if no action is taken to renew it or make it permanent, after 18 months, this ordinance becomes ineffective, essentially goes away. It would provide the city with an opportunity. I believe the intent of the city is to establish a committee to review the data that comes in from the surrounding communities, both those that have opted in and opted out, review that data, and then provide feedback to council whether or not this is something with more information that would be an appropriate fit for the city. So this, as I indicated, this ordinance would temporarily prohibit all marijuana establishments, and again, that's both recreational and medical for the minimum the next 18 months.
Okay, thank you.
I make a motion that we opt out with a sunset provision.
So this...actually, for a motion to approve the first reading of this ordinance?
Okay, so I make a motion...so to make a motion that we approve the first reading of this ordinance, opting out with a sunset provision.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, a couple things. First, I also want to just indicate that what the attorney...or build on what the attorney said. The reason why we chose 18 months was based on past history with medical marijuana. We feel that the regulations more than likely will not be out until the end of 2019, with the first licenses probably going out sometime in the first quarter of 2020. So by taking an 18-month approach, assuming that, you know, we're going to have the second reading of this and then a month after that, so in two months, we'll put this into effect, that gives us ample time to wait for the regulations to come out and then have probably somewhere in the neighborhood of six to eight months to gain data from other cities in terms of what happens. Is there more crime? Is there less crime? Is there more economic development around the centers? And so it gives us a chance to actually get some hard data to make an informed decision at that time. And so we put the sunset on there so that this has to be revisited in 18 months from the time that it's approved, so that we're...just to let you know that we're not punting it down the road, we want data to be able to make a decision, so.
Yeah, what does sunset mean? Is that part of that plan?
Yeah, sunset basically means in 18 months, this ordinance prohibiting...or opting out is no longer valid. And so we would have to take it up as council to continue or to make a change to opt in at that time.
You can come up to the microphone.
Does 18 months give you enough time, or eight months, six to eight months, to understand property value impact?
Hopefully. I mean, I mean, again, when this sun sets, if we take no action between now and 18 months, when it sunsets, then we begin the discussion again, and that would be something that we will look at. And if we don't have enough data, we can, you know, push it off, you know, continue to opt out for, say, three months or six months longer until we do have the data that we need to make a...
As long as we make a decision before the opt out, before the sun sets.
Right.
We're okay. So we can extend it, yes.
Yeah. And I also had a question for the city attorney that I forgot to ask earlier. It mentions the ordinance...the resolution mentions a penalty for violations. So what happens if, you know, say, a convenience store starts selling it in their, you know, back...well, openly, let's say they start selling it. So we cite them with a fine, and what is that fine? Because let's say the fine is $50. You know, they may say, "All right, well, I'll get a fine every single day, and I'm going to sell more than $50 a day." So how does that work?
Yeah, well, it's a...we're restricted...the cities are restricted by what types of violations they can assess based on the ballot initiative that was passed. So the fine would be a municipal civil infraction. It could be each day, it could be a new violation. Typically, first offenses are 150, and then they would escalate from there under...I don't have their fee schedule, but...
But punitive enough that nobody's gonna...
It could...you...I mean, I don't...I don't know what the profit margin would be, but it could get pretty expensive if every single day...and then in addition to that, the state would likely step in.
Well, that's what I was going, is who steps in if something like that were to happen?
Where can we get that information, though? Because that's going to be...how much it would be?
It's in our ordinance, 2-201. I can try to pull it up.
Any other discussion? We're waiting for Scott. We're waiting for you to look up something?
I said I can try to get the...
Oh, okay. Okay. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. And approval for the first reading. It's approved. Second consideration will be the approval. Seeking approval for the special land use resolution for Jagged Fork.
Mayor and council, if you recall, this is for the proposed restaurant at 28601 Southfield Road, the former Honey Tree location. The owners have submitted an application for a site plan and special land use approval. The planning commission had already held a public hearing on February 26th for the operation of a sit-down restaurant with a Class C liquor license. The use is allowed in this zoning district, which is an MX, mixed-use zoning district, subject to land use approval. The planning commission approved the site plan on February 26th. The standards required include an upgrade on the landscaping and facade, screening the dumpster and grease containers, removing the concrete on the west north side of Avila Boulevard, and replacing it with landscaping and repositioning the concrete bumper blocks and maintaining them. The planning commission has recommended that the special land use be approved by the council with the conditions as detailed in the Giffel memo dated February 18th. The standards include reasonable use, conformity with other regulations of the city, location, intensity, and periods of operation, uses, character on adverse effects, and neighbors, site design, and demonstrated need. And I believe the representatives of the organization are here with you today.
Thank you.
Evening, council.
Evening.
Is this okay, time to address you?
Nope, we're going to make a motion if I haven't even...
Oh, sorry.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the special land use for Jagged Fork at 28601 Southfield Road with a Class C liquor license with the stipulations mentioned in the special land use.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Now, is there any discussion?
Yes. We can be really brief, whatever the council prefers. David Draper, I'm an attorney for Jagged Fork. I have with me two of the owners, Francesco Adamopoulos and Tom Technos. And we've been in front of Planning Commission and really thank you guys for your time and being very welcoming and allowing us to present information. This is a restaurant. This will be the fifth in a...this group owns. Hudson Cafe is downtown. There are two Jagged Forks in Rose Point and Rochester Hills, and Zoe's in West Bloomfield, all with a similar concept, kind of a high-end lunch-in, breakfast. They're requesting alcohol. All of the other locations do have liquor licenses, and they all close about 3 o'clock. So it's more of a breakfast and into lunch, but not late. We think this location...my clients think it's a perfect kind of central location, given what they've got going so far, and they're very excited to be on Southfield Road. We're open to any questions, whatever. You know, we've gone through the Giffels and Webster letter and agree with their recommendations. I can go point by point, but I think they're...you know, you guys worked with them over the years, and they've done a great job. We're happy to comply with any conditions that council might set. And really, we've submitted the plans, paid the fees. We would ask for approval of the special land use and that the liquor license formerly granted to Honey Tree be granted to Jagged Fork, and they will follow the conditions. And I will assist, and they will assist in completing the transfer if council would grant that to them. And thank you.
Is there any other discussion from council? Any questions?
Is there a timeline on the conditions that once you...once we get?
I don't know that there's one. I would defer to council or to the council. We're ready to...my clients are ready to go right now. As soon as they get permits, they're in there. So everything is submitted, and I can submit the liquor license application. I just checked. The Honey Tree one appears to be dormant. I checked today.
Yeah, it doesn't appear active any longer.
So I think we can get started with that, and they can...they're going to do a demo and a build-out and kind of transform the space in, I think, a great way. But, I mean, we'll start immediately. And I think they think 90 days is appropriate for the build-out.
Oh, so you're going to do a...
Yeah, we're waiting to get approval so that we can purchase the building first. So Huntington Bank is sitting in limbo, waiting for my go-ahead so that we could close on the building. Once we do that, with your blessing, we'll just go in there, we'll start demo. And while we're doing our demo and remodel, we'll just hit those points one by one, so that we open doors, doors open.
Everything is taken care of.
Everything ready to go.
So your projected opening date, 90 days out, or beyond that?
We say 90 days, but you know how contraption goes, so we'll see. But yeah, we should be...
And a mayor's...
And you'll bring that unique menu that's at the Hudson and at the other places as well?
Do you have a favorite?
Oh, there was some banana...
Bouncing banana French toast?
Yes, yes, that French toast.
Just for you will be there.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes.
I'm gluten-free, so just...
Which one would you like to...
Just letting you know.
And really good salads, too, so.
Very good.
We'll have it.
So just a quick question regarding landscaping. I know you won't be able to hit it until late spring, but when the Honey Tree was there, we had a timeline where they were going to complete that and make it unique or their own or whatever. I'm hoping that you guys have a favorable plan to implement that and have some good curbside appeal.
Right. We discussed that two meetings ago when I was here. And obviously, we want...we're putting our money into purchasing the building, right? So it's an investment for us as well, too. So we're going to do everything we can do to make sure that the building looks nice on the inside and outside as well, too. So we know that you guys have issues with the Honey Tree's landscaping, and we don't want it to be an eyesore. We want to be part of the community, not like the outsider out. So yeah, we'll do everything we can do to make sure that landscaping is...looks nice.
Yeah, appreciate it.
It'll be done before we open as well.
Okay. Just one last observation. I'm not sure if you did your research on Lathir Village, but typically, I mean, we're one of the smallest communities in the area, and pretty much everyone knows each other, and they usually frequent restaurants as recommended. Can you share with us what your outreach is now, what you're doing with those other restaurants, and how would you incorporate it into Lathir Village?
So we're unique in the fact that in all the restaurants that we own, we have an operating partner in each restaurant. So Tom's at the Hudson Cafe every single day downtown. And even though it's downtown and it draws from all the suburbs in the area, there's still that local community feel downtown with the people that are working down there every day. Tom's been down there for eight years, and I guarantee you, he knows most of his customers that walk through the door, and everybody that walks through the door knows him. I actually just celebrated my five-year anniversary today at Rose Point. And Rose Point's similar to Lathir Village. It's a small community. We all know each other. Everybody that walks through the door knows me, and I know most of my customers as well, too. So we're going to bring that, like, that personal feel to being here. It's a mom-and-pop shop.
That's good.
Forget about the fact that we have five locations. We're still like that mom-and-pop shop. Forget about the fact that we have five locations, we're still like that mom-and-pop shop restaurant. We've grown up in the business, like, this is what we've always done. So, we wanna be the community, right? So, that's our outreach.
It's a personal feel, but it's a class to it, which is what I appreciate from the Hudson's Cafe. So, I just want you to know, we know the class that you could put in to the neighborhood, too, so, yeah.
So, you all are on Facebook, Instagram, and all that?
We're a little over a hundred thousand followers, do you know that?
Okay, okay. And officially, I guess you're gonna make an official announcement?
Yeah.
Once we get done with this, obviously, Facebook page or something like that?
Well, Facebook, Instagram, we have a huge outreach, so, we'll outreach a lot of people.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Excited about having you.
Mayor and council, I just wanted to bring to your attention, there was one minor modification to the special land use resolution, that was relative to the bumper guards. And in addition, there was adding that they will be maintained as well.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, whoop, all opposed? Because you have it in here where it looks like you're asking for a roll call on it.
You're asking for a roll call?
Oh, no, I just wanted to give that to you all just in case.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So, I'll continue, all opposed? The special land use passes.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
So, to be informed.
See you soon.
Very soon.
Yeah. Next up for consideration is approval of the easement encroachment license for LV Petro LLC. The, who would like to introduce that?
I think Attorney Baker could give you an overview on the easement.
Okay, I got you, okay.
All right, so, the, you're fine. Last month, the, or, yeah, the last regular meeting, the city council approved the special land use resolution for the LV Petro LLC to operate a BP gas station at the two-six-seven-two-seven Southfield Road address. One of the requirements was that they were to obtain a license, sorry, an easement encroachment license from the city. So, that's what you have provided, they have completed the application, they have filled, provided the requisite insurance information and paid the appropriate fee. So, in your packet is a, is the application that they filled out as well as a proposed licensing agreement, which requires them to maintain that insurance policy as long as they have the license. It requires that they make certain conditions that, while they are granted that the ability to utilize the city property, in the event they cease to comply with these, any of these conditions, the city can revoke that license upon a majority vote of the council.
Thank you. Is there anyone here from the, okay. Anyone like to make a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the easement encroachment resolution to LV Petro LLC, two-six-seven-two-seven and two-six-seven-three-nine Southfield Road.
Second?
I'm moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Just a quick question.
Yes.
Which address is the easement?
It's actually for both. So, their application had the incorrect address, they had...
Okay, is this one right?
Yeah, this is, seven-three-nine is the appropriate address, they had seven-five-seven, I don't know where that came from, but there is no two-six-seven-five-seven. So, two-six-seven-two-seven is the existing Verizon store, two-six-seven-three-nine is the old Health Quest store. That, they're, under, their plans that building will be demolished, and, but they are requesting to be able to utilize the entire alleyway that ran adjacent to both of those parcels.
I don't remember, are they, are they, they're gonna incorporate that as a one address eventually, aren't they?
I believe that will be the assessor's preference, so, but for the sake of this agreement, and each one right now is a separate parcel, so...
Yeah, tangential question.
I know that there will not be any alcohol or anything served there, but this is also gonna be the convenience store as well.
Correct.
A convenience store, gas station.
Hold on, because I can't, I can't hear you.
You can.
Hello? Thank you. Sorry, I saw your face, but, now, try it again. Say what you're interested in.
I was just wondering, I know that there was a meeting, I know that there won't be any liquor or alcohol served at this, but there will be a convenience store as well. Is that right? Okay, and, okay. And I'm sure the landscape improvements in the parking that all went through...
Yeah, so, they're, they're planning on redoing the Verizon building. They had some, the planning commission, as well as in our meeting, what was it, last week? They brought conceptual drawings of, architectural drawings of what the building will look like, very nice building.
Parking was...
Parking, landscape offering. There's some, a couple wa, a couple divider walls between the, can't remember exactly where, between the sidewalks and the property.
Okay.
It's all up to code and...
Okay, beautiful, okay.
So, will the easement have a wall on the back section?
Yeah, that was, that was part of the approved site plan that planning commission approved. There is going to be a screening wall, they're going to replace the existing fence, I guess that's there, with a masonry screen wall. This, the easement actually addresses just the alleyway.
Right.
Which, if you've been back there, that alleyway has actually been commandeered by the previous tenants, and it's, there's trees growing in it, there's a barricade across it, so... This is something that would have been required of the prior tenants if they had continued to utilize the property the way that it's currently being utilized. But moving forward, it will be required by, by the LV Petro, so...
So, did the planning commission underline the structure of the wall and the material of the wall?
That's all, all in the site plan that we approved, that we approved last week.
Okay.
So, these are two businesses that's gonna become one, right?
Two addresses.
Two addresses.
Yeah. The other one is just an empty, empty lot.
How does that affect the taxes with it being two? No big deal? Does it go down, does it go up?
It would probably go up because it'll be a functional business versus a vacant.
Okay, got it.
The value of the building on it and the property is probably gonna be...
It'll go higher, okay.
Any further discussion? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next up, we'll have the city administrator report.
Thank you. Mayor and council, it's been a busy week, busy month already. I had a meeting last week with MDOT and the road commission, as well as our engineers for the initial discussion and plans for the eleven-mile reconstruction. So, that will probably start taking place late summer, early fall. There will be some lane closures as well as the eventual closure of that exit ramp. So, we are also going to plan on having a community conversation with residents and local businesses so they are aware of what's going to be the impact to them. The businesses will still have access to their parking lots, and those entrances will also be restructured as part of the project.
Do they have a estimate for the total time for the project?
About six weeks.
That's not too bad.
Which usually means eight to ten weeks.
But, yes, and that's on both sides.
No, just the one side.
Just the one side, okay.
And we recently submitted a historic preservation grant for community assessment. Suzie Steck, our new manager of community and economic development, worked with the historic preservation commission people, and she, she did an amazing job in forty-eight hours of pulling it together and getting it submitted. So, thank you for that, and we hope to have a successful outcome.
How long do we, how long does it take until we hear back?
Suzie, do you have any details relative to the grant?
Their timeline's pretty tight. I would imagine that we're gonna hear about it within the next couple of weeks, couple, three weeks. They, they wanna have the whole assessment as a three-phase assessment. That, you know, it consists of a questionnaire, site visits, and then a community presentation of the findings. And the whole thing is supposed to be done by July. So, they've got a tight timeline, so hopefully we'll hear something soon.
Okay.
Okay, all right. I, and we had a meeting with representative from the water resource commissioner in regards to the transitioning of the maintenance for the sanitary retention tank. So, we're starting that due diligence, we have an initial draft, but we're working through some of the details. So, we hope to have that in place in the coming months as we work through that process. As you recall, we had some complaints from residents on the parking to the residential streets adjacent to Southfield Road, and you approved a traffic control order that will prohibit parking on the mailbox side of the street from Monday through Saturday, eight AM to six PM, I believe are the hours. Our police chief has ordered the signs, they'll be installed as soon as the ground permits, and they're going to try to find a temporary way to have some signage available as well. So, we want residents and businesses to know that going into effect will be no parking on, in front of mailboxes for those streets immediately adjacent to Southfield Road. They'll start ticketing once the signs are in place. And we also had, Suzie and I also had a meeting with the redevelopment-ready community in terms of how to move that process forward. There are some elements that we need to refresh and update, so she'll be very busy working on those as well. And if you recall, I think some of you have registered to attend the SimCOG session tomorrow on Finance One-on-One on Road Funding. And that's most of the morning tomorrow downtown at their offices. And, let's see, I attended the Lions Club pancake breakfast, that was good, and I had quite a few pancakes. Thank you, Cliff. But it was a great turnout, they had really maxed out the room, and they were going in cycles. So, it was, I, I think it was a successful event for them and the work that they do. And I also want to remind you that I will be attending the MML conference, the capital conference that's coming up, I think it's around the eighteenth.
The nineteenth and twentieth.
Yes, and I will be a panelist there to talk about council manager relationships. So, I did my PowerPoint yesterday on the good, the bad, and the ugly, so, this should be enlightening.
That's from previous working with council.
The bad and the ugly, this is the good. And also to remind everyone that on March eighteenth, the State of the City address will be held at the Regency Manor in Southfield, and our mayor, Mayor Garrett, will be one of the presenters. And that concludes my report.
What do you put on YouTube while you do the meetings?
Believe it or not, this year I have requested that we have some type of representation, that the residents are able to see the state of the city, or... No, they've never been, or I could just come back here and do it all over again and see if people... No, that's not gonna happen anyway, but, yes, it's gonna be recorded, just our section of it, because, no, just our section of it.
And if I could add, in regards to making meetings available, the planning commission meetings will be televised as well going forward.
To keep you informed.
Thanks.
Also, there's some street signage down, you would like to speak to that, maybe?
I've contacted, the one that's on the service drive, I contacted the road commission first and asked if it's not theirs, if they could convey that information to MDOT if it's their signage, to either have it re-erected or removed, whichever is appropriate. And then the residential sign, our DPS is aware of it, and they, as soon as the ground permits, they will take care of that as well.
Thank you. City attorney, do you have anything for us?
Just to follow up on the earlier question about civil, municipal civil infraction fines, they are, the lowest fine amount that a judge could assess is nine dollars, and then up to five hundred dollars plus cost.
You said nine?
Nine.
So, it's up to the judge, okay.
What did you say, nine?
You said nine.
Between nine and five hundred, that's our fee schedule, so... I have yet to see the judge fine someone nine dollars, so...
Okay. Anything else?
Nope, nothing further for me.
Planning commission report.
Okay, so, we had a planning commission meeting last week where, obviously, we approved the site plan and special land use for Jagged Fork, which we voted on tonight. The other issue that we, we've begun discussing, based on a request from the building owner of Panera Bread, is to consider the, to consider allowing a drive-through on Panera Bread. Panera Bread's lease is coming up, and it's pretty much reading through the lines, Panera will walk if they don't have a drive-through. So, the owner of the building, Sam Sernow, came to us, we had a meeting with city officials, the planners, and then we had a planning commission meeting last week, last week where we discussed it. The issue is, is that the Village Center District is, is currently zoned for, its current zoning does not allow for drive-throughs because the Village Center District is meant to be a walkable district, and having a drive-through goes right in the face of being walkable. So, they've asked us, Sam Sernow, the building owner, has asked us if we would be amenable to making some type of change, which we're considering and discussing. He realizes that, you know, that it is a possibility that we may come back and not allow, allow zoning change for that, and he's prepared to start marketing that building to another vendor if the, if that's the case. But we all love Panera, and we wanna see what we can do to make them stay. So, we are having ongoing discussions about that, that particular issue. We're actually having a special meeting next week because time is somewhat of the essence because Panera has actually been in town looking for alternative locations should this not go through, so...
In our town, or other towns?
No, not in our town.
Okay, well, I mean, it, it looks like it could be a pretty easy deal to accomplish because on the side of Panera, it looks like it could easily fit a drive-through.
There's all sorts of hurdles in terms of, you have the right terminology for the buy, buying, having room for a bypass lane.
Yeah, the traffic queuing, how many cars stack up, plus there's, that, that parcel is what's envisioned for the Village Center, and as Bruce indicated, the, the idea of a walkable downtown, a drive-through is a complete opposite of that concept, so...
Yeah, so, so we are, we're currently discussing it, we've made, just to be, be real clear, we've made no decisions, and if you have input, you can either now or come to the planning commission, we invite anybody to come to the planning commission, and we welcome people to come to the planning commission to talk to us about what they think about the particular issues. But I know that it looks like some people are raising their hand, so...
Just a bank has a drive-through, what was it?
The bank is not in the same zoning district.
Actually, the banks, banks would not be permitted. Yeah, they're not a legal, that's a legal non-conforming use, so they would not be permitted under the new Village Center zoning district.
Yeah, legal non-conform means that they were there when the, when the zoning was put into effect, so they were kind of grandfathered in.
We did suggest if they would consider moving Panera there, and they could shoot their salads through the tube.
Yeah, somebody told that Big Ju, which is right, was next to Market Press at thirteen and Southfield, was moving so that they could have a drive-through down closer to Lathir Village. I don't know if you're aware of that, or if that's, if somebody...
If it's in Lathir, if they're thinking about Lathir Village, it has not been brought to the planning commission at this point.
I believe that's the only reason they're moving the landlord up their rent to the drive-through.
Okay. Oh.
They seem to not know about it.
Good.
Okay, so, get to know each other. So, is there anything?
That's it.
Okay, I see that you have your book out, so I'm assuming that it means you have some things you would like to discuss.
SimCOG.
No, just, just one. So, in February, we had a meeting, Councilwoman Stallings and I had a meeting with SimCOG to kind of realize if we could actually have bike lanes slash a bike route that's identified through Lathir Village. And I was trying to figure out if we actually added that to the, the city manager's weekly report. Did we, I can't remember if I even saw like a detail of that, because we had some takeaways where we would, you know, take a, a look at the adjustments we need to make on our, on our plan, our city planners' list, and then we thought we were going to reconvene at a later date, but I can't remember what that date is. I think we did have a date, but I don't, I don't recall.
I think the only takeaway at this point was we are, you're right, SimCOG came in, and we had a meet with SimCOG and city planner and our city engineer. The takeaway was for the engineer to bring back some type of plan. We talked about having signs, bike signs out, and how we could integrate our bike route with maybe getting to Southfield, someplace in Southfield. maybe getting to Southfield, someplace in Southfield. So he's supposed to bring back, on, on March eighteenth, he's supposed to bring us back some type of layout, some type of drawing.
Cost estimate maybe?
The cost estimate as well as where, what we could do actually to get it done, to, to start moving towards these grants. There's, there's two other opportunities for grants with, well, MDOT, not MDOT, but with SEMCOG and so March eighteenth is when we're supposed to get the plan. That was the only major take, takeaway.
So was that, that's Giffel, so is Giffel's going to meet with the city planner?
He's coming back, they're gonna come back to our meeting.
They're gonna bring SEMCOG back?
They actually scheduled it around you because you're traveling the first week and so they wanna bring it to the March eighteenth up session here for city council to look at, so we don't have to schedule another meeting. But the good, one of the, one of the, so, was that it? I didn't wanna change the subject if you're not, but that was really the only takeaway, they're going to come back to city council with some type of plan and a cost estimate.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
I don't think I'm traveling any further. Okay, thanks.
So anyway, that was, that was part of my SEMCOG report as well as understanding, bringing SEMCOG here too was a very good, even though it was around the bicycle conversation, but it also brought a lot more interest in working with you and helping us with our businesses and things like that, so no, that was, that was pretty much it and, and Cheryl has already mentioned the meeting tomorrow, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Sadiq, if you have anything?
Yep.
Madam Mayor, if I could, if I could.
Sure.
Just want to announce that if you're thinking about running for city council, packets are available, you have to be a resident of the city for at least one year. I have in the packet the petitions that you'd need for the voters to sign, I need twenty-five signatures, no more than fifty. And your entire packet to run for city council has to be returned to me by July twenty-third before four PM. Our next election is November fifth, but I thought I'll get that out there now in case anyone is interested in running for city council. Normally, there are three seats available, this time it's going to be four because of the resignation of Frank Brock, we have a fourth position and that person will, person or persons who are ever interested in running for that seat will run for the remainder of his term and his term will be up in 2021. And I believe that's all, so if you'd like a packet, stop by the city clerk's office.
Thank you. And then just something that I just wanted to bring up is that regarding Facebook, just to be recorded, that the official page to contact the city is the Lathrop Village city page, that is monitored, that is responded to. The Villager is a page that was made up by residents and that is to be informing the residents about different things. When it comes to the actual council responding, which I have, you know, been told repeatedly not to respond, which officially, I'm saying I will not respond any longer, so I won't get in trouble, is not the forum if you really want some information. All of our email addresses are on the website and I do believe all of us respond, I'm sticking my neck out here, all of us respond to our emails or you can call and we are giving all of our messages and we'll call you back. Point is, is that the majority of us are on the Villagers because we're also residents and so we also wanna know what's going on in our, our neighborhood, but now I'm seeing that it's becoming more problematic with us being on there and responding. So just to officially say, whichever camera I'm supposed to look into, if you want to be on Facebook and communicate to the council, please go to the City of Lathrop Village's page, not the Villager. Okay, oh, not the Villager, the City of Lathrop Village's page, okay? I think that is all that I wanted to say, that there is also a special planning commission meeting next Tuesday at seven PM and that is regarding, is it seven?
Maybe not, maybe not on Tuesday, I think, it's looking like, it's looking like Thursday at fourteenth.
So how far in advance do you need to have that posted?
I'm, I'm just waiting for like another day or two to make sure everyone has a chance to respond, but it's looking like, it's looking like the fourteenth is the winner.
Okay, and so everyone can check back where to find out, because I just think that that's also, that's the Panera discussion, correct?
It is Panera discussion, I will get it posted on the city's website, if that helps, before the end of the week, definitely.
Okay, well, scratch what I said, it's either the, it's probably the fourteenth and it's at seven PM, correct?
That looks like the winning time, so.
Okay.
Scott, are you gonna be at that meeting?
I actually will not be, someone from my office should be.
Okay. Can you expand on what decisions are gonna be made at that meeting or just discussions?
There won't be any decisions, it's just discussing what the ramifications are of change, so if we, if we do make a change, we would have to make a change to the Village Center zoning ordinance to allow drive-throughs with special land use. So the tenant would have to apply for special land use, which would then be recommended through the planning commission and approved by us. So there'll be a lot of stops along the way, but the idea of that meeting is to discuss whether or not the planning commission wants to go down that path.
Okay, now, is the tenant going to come with renderings or is it just an open discussion?
He's come with renderings already.
He has, okay.
We've responded to the renderings, we've also, so for example, you, you brought up earlier, you know, where you said it would be easy to put it on the side.
Yeah.
One of the things, one suggestion that was made, I know because I made it, was instead to, to avoid some of the stack-up issues, to somehow have it come behind the building and then circle around and go back out behind the building. So they're, they're looking at, at that as, they took very good notes and they were gonna look at some other options, I don't know whether or not they're gonna come with alternative renderings, but they did have renderings at the last meeting.
Okay, so when you say behind the building, you're talking about the new section parking lot?
Yeah, so come from behind, they, they own the bank as well, so maybe coming from behind the bank so that, that it's a straight line in and then a straight line out and they don't come in and cause more traffic and, and potential backups on the Southfield Road, but then, again, that's, it's all in discussion, so there's nothing that's been cemented.
Alright, thank you.
Anything else? Well, I will take a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So move second?
Been moved to second, we are adjourned, thank you all for coming out.